Commissioners, good morning. As Steve said, my name is John Barker. I am the head of live event production and operations and vice president of live events for the National Football League. Thank you for allowing us this time this morning to come and update you once again on the plans for the 2020 draft in Las Vegas, Nevada. Before we do so, I want to step back in time a little bit, go 10 months back to Nashville, Tennessee. Now that we have our post-event reports, I can accurately report to you that 600,000 people took to the streets over three days in Nashville, Tennessee. I can tell you that 50% of those fans that attended came from out of town. I can tell you that there was $224 million in economic impact, and I can tell you there was $130 million in direct spend in the city of Nashville. I can also tell you 47.5 million people watched from home over three days, and I can tell you that the broadcast was seen in 115 countries. We're very proud of the draft in Nashville, but as my boss Roger Goodell says to me the next day after, "So what's next? How are we going to make it bigger, and how are we going to make it better?" I can't think of a better town or a better city to bring the draft to than Las Vegas. Las Vegas understands the importance of special events, you understand how to host special events, and you understand how to produce special events. This is a city that understands that, and that's why we're excited to be here. As we think about designing this event for Las Vegas, we not only think about the thousands and thousands of people that will come here, we also think about the people who live here, the people who work here, and the people that call Las Vegas home. The way we think about draft is not, "The NFL is dropping the draft in Las Vegas, Nevada." We think about this being Las Vegas' draft. That's how we design it. We want to weave the fabric of this community into every aspect of this draft. We're very excited to be here, and we're very excited to share these plans with you. I know the focus of today will be the road closures. To be able to give you context for that, I want to walk you through a couple of things. For the past 14 months, we have been working together with you, very closely with the LVCVA, Caesars, MGM, Metro, Fire Rescue, Department of Public Works, and of course, the Raiders. As we develop these plans with help from the LVCVA, we have worked with dozens and dozens of members of the business community, the resort corridor, and local unions. For the next three months, we will refine those plans. We will dig into communications, parking, and traffic, food, beverage, entertainment, and programming. The work doesn't stop today; it actually begins today. Our focus will be on the smaller and refined details of this event. I want to stop here just for a second and just touch on this slide. You can start to see here now the creative of this event. Our style guide is being produced, being released very shortly. The style and the feeling of this event will really capture all of Las Vegas. The deep colors that you see here, the purples and the golds and the reds, this is taken directly from the lights of the Strip. And then you can see a nod to old Vegas in here, which we'll touch on again in a little bit, and also new Vegas. What we want to do here is highlight the energy of the city, the illumination of the city, and certainly the magic of the city. So as we move on, I want to take a look at the overall footprint of the NFL Draft in Las Vegas. I point your direction now to the top of the screen here where you see the Bellagio Fountains. This is where the draft begins on Thursday afternoon. This will be the home to the red carpet stage. This is where prospects are introduced to a global audience with themselves and their family member walking across the stage that is built directly on the Bellagio Fountains. And told by our friends at the MGM, this is the largest stage that's ever been constructed on their water, and we're very proud of that piece. This will be what a global audience sees when they turn on their television and they look at the NFL Draft in Las Vegas. This is the first image that they will see. From here, I point your direction to the two yellow lines that come down Flamingo and down Link. The Flamingo is very important to us. This is the artery of the draft. This is what connects the Strip to where our experience at our draft main theater will be. This will also be our processional. As the players exit from the red carpet, we will put them into open-air cars, and they would proceed down Flamingo to the draft's main theater. This gives the fans of the draft, and football fans everywhere, up close and personal look as all of those prospects make their way. This is also the front door of our draft. We will build a structure that will span across Flamingo at the Boulevard and be the welcoming and open door. It's what connects the Strip to where experience and the theater will be. As I now point your direction down to the lower, this is the Caesar Forum area where the new Forum Convention Center is being built and the adjacent parking lots. This will be the epicenter of two very important things for us. First is the NFL Experience. The best way to describe it to you is an NFL-themed park. Here, we will have the history of football on display with our rings, Vince Lombardi Trophy, and also our interactive activations and games, our kicking games, our punting games, our 40-yard dash games, and our clinic fields are here as we build out our youth programming. Adjacent to that, on the other side, is where the main theater will be, looking back against the Strip. It will be attached to the side of the new Caesar Forum. We will build our largest stage structure to date and then use parts of the Forum to host our green room and our working media room. Also important to point out here, this entire footprint will be surrounded by a hardened perimeter. This will be Jersey barricade and six-foot fence that will then be scrimmed. This will ring the entire footprint. Every person going in and coming out of the draft experience in the main theater stage will go through magnetometers. We will use a clear bag policy. Our security plans continue to develop between all the property owners, NFL Security, Metro, federal, state, and local law enforcement. All of our events, it's also important to point out, are always ADA compliant. As we move on, I want to bring your attention to now our schedule. The draft lasts for three days. Draft Experience on Thursday will open at 12:00 and will close approximately at 9:30. We will close the experience when the main stage activity closes down. Live from the red carpet on Thursday will start at approximately 2:15 and run to about 3:30, and then the prospect processional to bring them to the main stage. Round one of the draft begins live at 5:00, and we think will run to about 8:00. At the conclusion of that, we will bring out our first performance, a headliner, A-list performer, for a Thursday night concert, much as we did in Nashville last year. And then we will close draft for day one. We return now for day two, which begins on Friday. Similar timing for Draft Experience, opening at 12, closing somewhere around 9:30 or 10: 00:00:00,000--1:00:00,000 00:00:00,000 draft from the main stage will start at 4 and run to approximately 8:00. This is rounds two and three, and again, a headliner performer will take the stage at the conclusion of round three. And then finally, a very early day for Las Vegas on Saturday morning. We will open the experience at 8:00 AM. Draft will begin at 9:00 AM. We believe that it would end somewhere at 4:00. And then lastly, to wrap it out, a final A-list headliner performer. It's important to note that the experience, the theater, the red carpet are all completely free all days. Draft Experience, the headline concerts, the draft theater itself, everything that happens at the red carpet, all completely free to any member that wants to come down. Also important to note that the red carpet stage does not go dark on Thursday. This will be an ongoing performance stage where we will introduce some of our headliner acts, roll back some content from the day before, live interview with players, highlights of football, and certainly content to keep people engaged. The idea there is to make sure that the draft is not just stay inside that main theater, but it spreads throughout all of Las Vegas. So with that, I want to then touch on some imagery for you so you can see what we're thinking. The firmst image here is the red carpet. In the background and framing this red carpet is the Bellagio Fountains with our structure in the forefront. Again, this will serve as the main structure for the red carpet, and then again, will serve as a stage for us on Friday and Saturday. This is a closer look, and we couldn't think anything that was more Vegas than to deliver our prospects and their families to the red carpet by boat. So every prospect will arrive at the red carpet by boat, and then they will exit by boat, and then they will hit the processional heading towards the main theater stage. And then this is a look at that campus. This is a million square feet of programming from the NFL. You see here to the right-hand side, this is the experience where we have many of our games, activations, and then the history of the great game. In the back there, you can see our clinic fields. We extend to youth programs and build community programs there. It's a big part of what draft is. Draft is just not about picking names. Draft is about NFL Green, which is material recovery, community programs. This is our social team and our community team with legacy programs. This is youth programs and youth football taking place all three days of the draft. So you see the experience there, and then on the other side, you see our main theater stage. You see that shell that covers it. The shell serves really three purposes for us. The first is sun mitigation. We will have a lot of fans in the proximity of the front of that stage. We want to make sure that they're covered, and we want to make sure that they have shade. Throughout the entire campus here, we will have heat mitigation plans to make sure that everybody is safe and hydrated. The second purpose of that shell is for television, to make sure that sun is not glaring directly in. We didn't want to turn the stage the other way. We want to be able to shoot the reverse, be able to see the high roller and see the skyline of Las Vegas, hence the positioning of that and the reason that we built that structure there. And again, it's not just about this stage, but it's also the Caesar's Forum and the use of that property to highlight that property as well. As we get closer into the stage here, you see now the beginning renderings. This will change slightly as we get more creative and we start to build out here. What I really want to point out here and what I'm really excited about is the top of the structure. You can see the imagery goes from the main stage to the top of the structure itself, and this is our nod to the Fremont Street Experience. Again, a nod to old Vegas, to make sure that we're highlighting that as well. And then as we reverse and turn around, this is some of the imagery that the cameras will capture. A sea of humanity watching the draft with iconic high roller in the background and the Vegas skyline there. This is our 40-yard dash, probably one of the most popular games that we bring to our experience, the opportunity for anybody to run against an NFL athlete, to test their speed against some of the greatest. And here, and thank you to the Raider organization, to Mark, to Mr. Davis, to allow us to put on display their Vince Lombardi trophies. It allows old fans of the Raiders and this new Raider fan base to enjoy the history of that great team and that great organization. We also do museum pieces and displays of all of the Super Bowl rings here. A real opportunity for fans, young and old, to be able to participate in the history of this great game. The experience piece is a wonderful family event for young and old. We encourage everybody to come down, and again, that's why I'm so proud that we always make sure that all of these events that surround draft are completely free to every member of the public. We have worked diligently and very hard with many of the community leaders here. Here displays a list of everybody that we have spoken to up to date, a lot of help here with the Raider organization, the LVCVA. This list will grow. As I said earlier to you, our work has only just begun. We have a lot more to do to refine these plans, and we will continue to outreach to all of these groups. We have a long history of making sure that we are talking to the community, whether it is in Philadelphia or the streets of Nashville. We work and we engage with the local business, local residents. Anybody that may be impacted by this event will always get an audience with us, will always get information with us, and we will continue to refine that communication plan to ensure everybody knows exactly what the plans are for Las Vegas. I have with me to enter into record a letter of support from the local Teamsters Union. Commissioner Naft, I know another union has reached out to you, and I believe, do we have the Culinary Union with us today? They are not here today, but we have spoken with them, and they will be submitting a letter of support as well. So all of that now leads to the context of, "Well, how do you do this?" We have, again, great success of building these massive structures. I'm proud to say this will be the largest stage that we will build for the draft here in Las Vegas, approximately 68 feet, Kimiana Spence, 68 feet high, 156 wide, 208 deep. It is a lot of work to get here, and we do need support to do that. There are going to be temporary road closures necessary. We have worked since day one with Kimberly Horn to make sure that we come up with a plan that has the minimal impact on this community. It's something that we do every single time, whether it is draft, or Super Bowl, or kickoff, or Pro Bowl. These are the plans to develop. I want to now turn this over to Ben Blocker, our executive producer from C3 Presents, who's going to walk you through the road closure plan for this event.
Okay, before I let you go, though, you, I gotta--
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, good, because Nevada, you gotta practice, Nevada. Gotta practice before we have this conversation.
There's a slight British-New York accent I've got. I'm working on it.
I know, you gotta try. You gotta try.
Ben?
Try to say Nevada correctly.
Thank you, John. I'm gonna say Clark County.
Ah, well done.
Now, I'll start on that note. I want to, again, reiterate what John said. We wouldn't be where we are today without a lot of help from Clark County, from our friends at Public Works, from Metro, from Fire, and then, of course, from the resort partners, who've been really instrumental in helping us put together the road closure plan you'll see in front of you. So I know this is hard to read on one screen. I'm gonna try to step through the pieces one by one and describe them for everyone, and then certainly we're open for questions. What I will say is we've worked together, again, with Public Works and Kimberly Horn to try to really minimize our timeframe and come up with time-efficient ways to go about our build. So we will be starting on April 8. That's our first boots on the ground. That is building the stage in the water at Bellagio, and we will start by taking the two lanes closest to the water between Flamingo and the Bellagio entry along Las Vegas Boulevard. We'll be utilizing those lanes to unload and offload trucks, and then during the hours of 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we'll be craning up and over the trees and actually building our stage structure. During those hours, we will rotate in and out of a possible third lane. We will only close that lane as necessary. This is a practice we've done in many markets, so we've grown quite adept at working through that and going in and out of those lane closures as necessary. If it's not necessary, we want traffic to be up and flowing at all times. That is really phase one of the build. Phase two is the arch that John referred to that will span across Flamingo at the Boulevard at that intersection. That, again, is something that we've really worked diligently with Public Works. That went, and we can thank them, that went from what started as a six-day build down to a 46-hour build, so they've really tightened the screws on us. But I think we've come up with a very confident plan to execute that. We also did a traffic study. So we did a traffic count with Kimberly Horn on that Flamingo traffic. We looked at the high-impact times. We looked at the times least impactful for our community here, our employees, that day-to-day commute, as well as our visitors going in and out. So what all of that led us to is that phase two. That will begin on the 13th, which is a Monday, and run through 46 hours to the 15th, and that will be our first full closure. That will close Flamingo Boulevard from Las Vegas to Coval. So we'll be looking at detours during that time. What this is illustrating up here on the board is that we will be looking at a forced northbound turn from all the eastbound traffic on Flamingo off of 15. That's how we will address it there. At Coval, they will be forced north and south. And again, this is a temporary detour that will only be up for those 46 hours. Then Flamingo will reopen and return to normal. And so during the rest of our build, that part will be up and running. I want to be clear about that, and not that we're shutting Flamingo down from the 13th all the way through the event. Phase three of the event will be the event days itself. So these will start on the 22nd at 10:00 PM, and that's really what you're looking at here. This diagram is representative of the full event day closures. So what we see is a full closure both northbound and southbound on the Boulevard from Flamingo to the Paris Entry and on Flamingo from Coval to Las Vegas Boulevard. Part of this plan is looking at those detours and where we are pushing traffic and how far out we are pushing traffic. So a lot of the background and the homework that's gone into this has been not only working with Public Works, but working with FAST, working with Indot, and everyone at Clark County to figure out, "How are we going to communicate this? Where do these detours take place?" We will be detouring traffic at Harmon, but those first messaging signs will go all the way from Tropicana to Spring Valley. So we want to be messaging traffic out on those far extremes and really trying to only push through traffic into the resort properties. That brings me to probably the last and most important point, which is the resort properties. How are we getting patrons in and out? How are we getting employees in and out? All of that has been done with a great amount of care and detail and really physically walking the spaces with our partners, both at MGM and Caesars. What we have come up with are some ways and some shoots that we will be able to keep all their entrances open throughout these closures. So in particular, I will start with the Cromwell and the Link and Flamingo. I know those are high-impact areas. Right there at Cromwell, we will be utilizing their same normal entry off Las Vegas Boulevard, but we'll be able to shoot out from the alley. We will create a lane opening there on Flamingo so that that westbound traffic exiting the Cromwell and Flamingo will be able to exit. They will have a protected lane with concrete barricade that will take them back up to the Boulevard where they will have a forced right northbound. Likewise, the Link Casino, because of its location, is impacted somewhat, but we've worked diligently to make sure that that parking garage structure stays open and that that traffic is not impacted either. So traffic will be able to approach from the east and still be able to come in and access the parking garage as usual. Same is true for those further south along our building area. So the Paris Casino will remain open. That main drive will stay open throughout, as well as Bellagio, both their north entrance and their main Boulevard entrance will remain open throughout. Finally, Bally's, again, is somewhat in the heart of our footprint, so we will, again, be working and building them a chute with concrete barricade that will run all the way down to Coval. That will allow all of their traffic to come via Coval, up a secure perimeter chute into their normal entry, and back out the same way. In addition, the yellow that you see here is our main footprint. We realize that displaces a significant amount of employee parking. We are working with our friends over at Caesars and looking at utilizing their south lots on the other side of Flamingo Boulevard to be able to park those employees and shuttle them over to work. So with that said, I know there will be many questions. I think our kind of overarching theme here is that we've done our best to really try to think through all of the scenarios and make sure, we know the lifeblood to the county is the employees, and they have to be able to get to work, and our patrons have to be able to get to the resorts. And that's as important to us for a successful event as it is to everyone here. So I hope that everyone understands that has been brought into consideration. On the out, I will just mention, the out is always much quicker. We will be out on the first altogether. We will only have one 24-hour closure. That's on the back end of our three show days for Flamingo to take the arch down. So that will happen starting on the 25th into the 26th. The other important thing to mention here with this traffic plan is when we are in our full closures, so the map that you see here in red, those are our showday closers, we will be opening both of those roads, the Boulevard and Flamingo, back up for the overnights. So on the Thursday into Friday, we will be open from 2:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and on the Friday into Saturday, we will be open from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM. We'll be working closely with the resort properties to help coordinate their big deliveries during that timeframe, but it's important to us that, you know, the linen trucks, everything's got to be able to get in and out and function as normal. So those streets will completely open back up. We will move all the barricade and then put that back in place for our actual showtimes.
Okay, does that complete your presentation?
Just in conclusion, commissioners, is we're excited that this is the first time from a league perspective that we're bringing an event to Las Vegas. We've never done that before, obviously. We are not an event that is coming in and then leaving town. There will be a long and established relationship between the National Football League and Las Vegas and Clark County, and we look very much forward to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna start, and I'll just go through all the commissioners, and I'll follow up. Okay, Commissioner Naft.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm sure you'll hear this from all of us. We're very excited you're here. The two things that I'm prioritizing are the economic interests of people in this district. No doubt you guys will help lift us up, and we're glad for that. You mentioned it a couple times, the team members who work up and down the Strip who make it happen. That's the other equally important priority for myself and I'm sure all of my colleagues. Can you delve, you mentioned that you'll make it a priority, you'll work with us, you will continue to work with us. Could you maybe get a little bit more into detail as to what that means and how you see that coming, how you see that happening? And then also, I understand that you've had conversations with the resort corridor and certainly through the LVCVA. I want to make sure everybody's voice is heard, and that includes properties that are not just in the corridor of closure, but those that are just beyond. They're going to have significant impacts as well, and how you see us moving beyond that.
Sure, I'll speak to that. So to take the first point, I think it starts with communication, which has been ongoing for the better part of a year now, but we will continue that. The detailed copy of all of our plans, the road closure schedule, all of the alternative detours, will be communicated effectively to each of the resort properties. We want them to be able to communicate out, first, well in advance to their patrons, "Hey, here's how you're going to get here during this time," and then, of course, to their employees, "This is how that will work. This will not affect your parking, or if this does affect your parking, this is how it will work." So that ongoing communications plan is something, and really, we are a transparent operation. We're always going to be available to answer questions and work through issues with them. I believe, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember the second, oh, further down the resort quarter. So we have had multiple meetings, and I'll let LVCVA speak to all of the various groups that we have spoken to thus far. But one thing I can tell you, and I know a reoccurring concern that has come up, has been parking, and that seems to be mostly what will impact the resorts outside of our immediate footprint. So we are aware of that. We will be working on and promoting a park-and-ride program from the convention center and utilizing the monorail into our site. So that will be one avenue that we will pursue. But our stance on that will always be, if the properties would like to police their own lots and not allow parking for the NFL Draft, that's well within reason, and we certainly understand that.
We've got your commitment beyond today, though, that as things come up, we'll continue to work together on that, and you'll work with them directly?
100%, yes, with that.
Okay. And then you did reference the, I did receive a letter of support from SEIU that they wanted added to the record, so I'm happy to do that.
Okay, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your presentation. When we met last month, I had raised the issue of sustainability and carbon footprint. Can you speak real quickly to the NFL's commitment to those goals?
Yeah, I can start with that, and then we'll pass to Ben. NFL Green is a part of the NFL family. We've been working with them for approximately 29 years now. They do both the Super Bowl for us and then also the draft for us. There's really two main focuses, well, three main focuses of that program. One is material recovery, so everything that we build and we use to produce the draft, if it can be recycled and reused, then we will cart it and take it away and make sure that that happens. The second part of that is recycling throughout the event footprint. We will make sure as much as humanly possible that everything is recycled and make that available to every patron that comes to us. We do work now, if you look at the Super Bowl, we're working towards a completely plastic-free stadium in Miami this year, where everything will be delivered in aluminum or paper, and no plastic products there, and we're working with our partners through that. And then the third part of that is the community outreach and the community piece. Last year in Nashville, we had several programs of tree plantings and recyclable programs. So NFL Green and that program to us is very important. It's woven into the plans for the draft itself.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Brown. Good? Okay, Commissioner Sagerblum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for those listening, Flamingo is not only important for the people that work on the Strip, but it's important east-west artery. So anyone in town who uses that artery, now's the time to start thinking about how you're going to get to your job or to the freeway on those days that it's closed. But it is going to be a fantastic event, and more importantly, this is the precursor, I hope, to the 2025 Super Bowl. So if Las Vegas does this, great.
No pressure in Nevada.
Is this where I say no comment? Is that appropriate?
So when you're stuck in traffic, just remember that in 2025, we will be right here, the center of the universe. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've appreciated the opportunity to sit with you a number of times and to see and hear of the enormity of the work, the combined effort. of the enormity of the work, the combined efforts of our departments and others and the hotels, as they've worked with the NFL, and your experts and consultants to make this work. And I have, whatever people would say about our unwillingness and our rigidity and our unwillingness to cooperate, that all goes out the window with the planning effort that has happened here. It is very, very obvious that we have worked very, very hard, and we're going to make this a success. So on our end, we know this is going to be a successful event. I think that most of the things that I've been concerned about are, have been addressed today and in the meetings that I've had with you. We're open to weighing in when necessary, but we know from the discussions we've had internally that that won't be necessary. Everyone here is committed to making this work, just like every other single major event in this community works as well or better than anywhere in the world. So thank you, we're supportive.
Well, we appreciate that, Commissioner. I think between Ben and ourselves, we've probably produced events in every city in this country and a few countries outside. And as I said at the top, and I'll say it again, this is a city that understands large events, understands the importance of them, and everything that we have seen, the collaboration has been fantastic. So we do certainly appreciate that.
Okay, Commissioner Weekly.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. First of all, let me thank you, John and Ben, very much. It's been an honor working with you all. Very exciting. This was brought to my attention a while ago. You know, I thought, wow, this is going to be amazing. And, you know, working with Commissioner Brown, you know, I'm very fortunate, he's our president of the board of the LVCBA under the leadership of Steve Hill. Thank you as well. When I was initially included in on those beginning meetings, and we were sworn to secrecy, I'm thinking, this is so exciting, y'all, hurry up. I want to tell somebody about this. This is really cool. But then as things started to get down to the nitty-gritty, some of the concerns that I had, and you guys have really addressed it, and I want to thank the Commissioners up here who asked some really tough, hard questions about the closures. But I more importantly want to thank you for including our county staff, our management, because that's vitally important to us. It's just Team Cedarburg, that's going to be extremely important as we continue to move forward, Ben, on that April date. We're going to make, we're going to have to make sure that, though, that communication stays extremely tight, because it seems to me as if we're going to absolutely have to heavily depend upon media to help us communicate with our constituents, because our phones will ring off the hook. People will be extremely upset because they can't seem to get to work and they don't understand what the road closure dates and times are. And so we will have to heavily depend upon our media and our partners like R&amp;R and the LVCBA to help us work with our resort partners, who have been absolutely wonderful to work with Team Valentine, who I think she's in the building as well. All of those things that I spoke about in our briefing is going to have to happen, and it's going to have to happen on a daily basis. I saw on one of the news channels last night, as I was walking like a zombie coming off of all the MLK festivities, there are, I believe, Commissioner Brown helped me with this, some of the new digital signs that will go into effect on the 15, I believe. Will we be utilizing those signs to start communicating with the public? Because again, for those of us who've been here for a number of years, as we've gone through the marathon, that's taken us years to kind of try and get that right. And, you know, we've gotten to the point where we say, if you don't have to go that way on Marathon Day, stay at home, because it gets to be really, really crazy for folks. But we want to make sure our regular commuters, who are trying to get to and from work, these are the folks who help keep the lights on in this amazing town. Because Nashville, Lord knows, I've had an amazing experience in Nashville. I love Nashville. I think we've been 86 from Nashville, huh? We love Nashville. But this is Vegas, as the LVCBA would say, this is Vegas, baby. And it's going to be a totally different ballgame here, right? I think, Ben, we're going to exceed their numbers. I believe that people from all over the world are going to come here, but we have to make sure that the people who live here and work here, that they're able to live their regular lives and not be so-so impacted, and also to not understand what it is that we're doing. So the communications is going to have to be tight. That's question number one. I have two more.
Okay. We can start on communication for sure, and it is a critical part of what we do. And I think from the top, we've spoken very clearly about the fact that making sure that the word gets out and the plan gets out and being very transparent about what we do is critical to this. As we mentioned, this isn't just an event that's going to be in town and then leave town. Our relationship with this county is long-lasting and everlasting. So through our own PR department, our marketing department, our social platforms, through everything available to us from the Raider Organization, everything available to us from the LVCBA, everything available to us through local media, and any digital assets that you have that's controlled by the county, we will program and we will push that message out. As we start to bear down and focus on this, that is part of the foundation of any type of event, making sure information's getting out will always be available, whether that's to meet in person or to push out large messaging to people. So that is just part and parcel of what we do, and we will ensure that that messaging gets out. We have a long track record of that. Again, to go back and look at Philly and Chicago and Nashville and Dallas, it's paramount to our success. So we will make sure and ensure that that does happen.
Okay.
I will, I'm sorry, I just want to add specifically to the digital boards and working with FAST and DOT, we will actually, through meetings that we've already had, they will have a control center at our command center with access to all of their boards. So not only will we be reaching out and utilizing those ahead of time, they'll have a seat at the table and be able to make real-time adjustments with us.
Ben, when do you estimate we'll start that communications with the public?
The overall PR plan?
Yes, sir.
I'll let John speak to that.
I believe we're pushing out messaging. First messaging goes out today about the draft being here, and then I would imagine as soon as we close Super Bowl, then we'll start focusing here on messaging. We want to make sure that these plans are refined, make sure everybody is comfortable, and then we'll start to move on that.
Okay. And then secondly, about the fan experience over on the Caesars property, how will we communicate that to the public as well? Because with a lot of our community centers, and as you all saw earlier, as Commissioners, all seven of us are extremely active in our communities, we all have community centers. What a great opportunity for our young people and families to experience this. How do we communicate that, or when will you have some information readily available for us to do that?
We could start that communication today if you'd like. We'd make sure that we connect you with, there's two groups within the NFL organization that will handle that for you. One is our Community Relations Team headed by Anna Isaacson, and then the second part is our Youth Football Team, which is an entire department within the NFL. Happy to connect you today with both of those groups, and they'll start to roll out for you what they're planning for draft.
And I'll just give you a suggestion. You may want to work with the Raiders Team. They've come in and, man, they've, they got it, and they got it early, and they've established themselves in all of our districts and have a great outreach team, so they may be a big help to you. And then lastly, Madam Chair, I'd just like to ask Caesars, as it relates to the high roller, will that stay as far as locals are concerned? Because that's one of the big things that we are going to be pushing, is that we want to make sure that the locals have an opportunity to have a great experience, because we'll be dealing with the impacts of all of this, but we also too want them to have a great time. What a wonderful way to experience this being on the high roller. Will those prices stay the same for locals? Or are you all going to provide a, put some kind of promotional?
Nothing like putting you on the spot.
Absolutely. Public, we're fighting for you. We want to make sure that we get a good experience out of this. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lee Moore, Regional President with Caesars Entertainment. So we're working through all of that right now. Obviously, we know we're going to set records with this event. We look to exceed things like the marathon, like New Year's Eve. So at this point, we have to look and see what's the best use of the space, but of course, the iconic view. Everything will be open. We've already established with our partners at the NFL, all of the events will be free, open to the public. So once we communicate out where best to park and how to get to the event, everything along the NFL lines will be free and open. In fact, many of our employees are so excited about being able to host this and actually attend the event before or after work with their families. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. And then lastly, Lieutenant Bell and all of the Metro Officers, thank you all for the safety plan. We sincerely, we talked heavily about security and making sure that as that traffic moves up and down the Boulevard, then the resort corridor, that there are dedicated lanes, that we make sure that there are secured vehicles that are coming through there, and that public safety is going to be vitally important, that we can also say to our general public that we've done everything we possibly can to make sure that this is 100% safe for everybody. Thank you, NFL. We appreciate you all for working with us. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask the hard questions. So I want to first, so parking is an issue, right? As we talk about getting the local fan base down there, so there's an expectation, at least from this board, that there'll be some bi-weekly updates to ensure that everybody, because this really is going to be people that are staying at the downtown that want to come to the experience. This is people in my neighborhood that may want to come to the experience. So parking overall, on what's the best way to get everybody to the location? So for me in particular, I deal with EDC, and boy, do I get 100 phone calls that weekend when they're in town. The Speedway, I get at least 50 phone calls at the same time, because people just want to know how to get in the easiest way to get to those. So there has to be at least an expectation from this board, and I know, Mr. Hill, you and I talked about this, is that there's some regular updates with the Chair of the Convention Authority to give to us so that we ensure that it's as smooth as possible. I mean, anytime you bring that many people into one location, you always have that. Nashville's great, right? Because they're not a, everything is downtown, you got to park a long ways away, and it's walkable. So, but we got to get, we got to bring people to this area. I mean, Opryland is, what, 30 minutes from downtown Nashville? So we want to make sure that we have the same kind of experience. So the first is parking, because I'm concerned where employees are going to park to get to and from, because even on New Year's Eve, that is, and I've said it to you all, that, you know, they spend their rest of their, after their shift tailgating, because it's so much congestion trying to get out. So how will we get that updated, or how will Commissioner Brown at least be able to communicate that to us?
Madam Chair, we feel like that's, that communication aspect is really, at least partially, maybe primarily, the responsibility of the LVCBA with this event. We plan to put either a website together or the information that would be contained in a website for the county, for folks who look at individual properties or maybe go to the NFL site, so that that information will be available prior to the draft starting. So we have initial concepts, and it's really more deep than that, but not completely finalized yet on all of the plans that will enable the issues that you've brought up. But we will put that information either into something that can be put on somebody else's website or create a website so people can go to, so they can understand both how best to do it and where it won't work for them.
But, well, I mean, and that's great, that piece of it, but we have to at least have a level with our Public Works folks, right? To also know that those conversations are going and that we're closer to where we were. So, I mean, on a staff level, we got to be able to adjust employees coming and going and all of that. So we need both pieces of communication. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps the ongoing communication at the staff level will be there, if not daily consistently. Perhaps we could use director's recognition. We'll have six more board meetings prior to the draft. Maybe I could provide any updates at that time of significance as far as parking, movement of the citizens to and from. Be more than happy to share that.
Okay. And then, secondly, so I know I'm going to get tons of phone calls after this is all released, of local folks wanting to know where, when can they start working on your stage that's going to be built? What can they do as far as, how is that outreach? I mean, because now this list talks about the folks directly impacted, and, you know, when you and I met, I said in Vegas, we do things way different, much faster. So when they're calling, what, who will reach out to those stagehands that are going to be asking, or different vendors?
Sure. So all that will run through C3 Presents, our production company behind the draft. And, you know, we should state, just as far as those local numbers go, you know, we're looking at anywhere from 1,500 up to 3,000 labor force locally hired for this event. So we're proud of those numbers, we're proud of that local impact that that will have. All of those asks will come and be directed from C3 Presents. We are still in our final RFP process, so, meaning all of our proposals, all of our requests for proposals are out for various pieces of this. Once all of those pieces are defined, all of that will turn into numbers for our labor calls, and we'll start our outreach with the local unions.
Okay. And so, because they'll also need time to gear up, right? There's so much work going on in town that we try to make sure that as many locals get the work that are possible. So let me ask you again on, I want to be clear, because this map is hard to read as a whole, but I just want to be clear in my head. So we talked about closing off Las Vegas Boulevard, so maybe you could use your finger to help me. And then Flamingo itself, it's one, it's only one lane, so we're always going to push people north and south, but it's one lane that'll do that as opposed to three lanes?
During, so during the build of the arch, Flamingo will be a full closure.
Which is April 8th, right?
April 13th through 15th.
Okay.
For a 46-hour period.
Okay.
And that will be from the Boulevard to Koval.
Okay.
Then it opens back up in full. The only difference there will be that turn lane, that right southbound turn lane. Those will be pushed to the further left lanes, but beyond that, it will function as normal. Then it will close again fully for our show days.
Okay. And then the, so the experience, so people getting from the Bellagio to the Link, they'll be expected to travel down the sidewalks, they'll be expected to walk in the roadway. I just want to understand that.
Correct. All pedestrian ways will remain open, and so that expectation won't change. The vehicle traffic is what would be detoured. So that detour, the last detour opportunity would happen at Harmon, and if they were going up to 15 or down to Koval, we would shoot them around. But again, that first messaging board would be back at Tropicana. So we'd be trying to instigate that detour all the way back there.
Okay. Well, in all fairness, I think you're going to have to go farther, right? So that people can navigate the system, whether it's, in my, in my mind, you got to start like at St. Rose Parkway, so that people can start planning their way, because otherwise it congests, and you got to go all the way to North Las Vegas, so that across the board, people understand the expectation. So the other thing that I talked to you all about is our ordinance that allows during athletic events, and I believe this is an athletic event, that we go to clear bags and plastic bottles, so that that's another safety component that we like to. When you put all these people in once, right, and we do it well, so we just want to make sure that, and because this is your first event with us, but not the last. Commissioner Sagerblum's going to bug you every week until you get that on the radar.
Commissioner, we have a, we have a standing clear bag policy at all of our events, so it's not uncommon to us to do that.
Okay. And then the plastic bottles too is a big one, so that people get excited.
Right, exactly. Understand the ordinance there, and we'll make sure that everything that we do is done that way.
Okay. And then this gives the resorts enough time to notify their vendors. Mr. Tar?
Yeah, Madam Chair. A few weeks back, our DA, Ms. Miller, has made a determination that our current ordinance does cover the event coming up, so we do not need to do any new ordinances for the ban on bottles or requirement for plastic bags.
Okay. Perfect. So then, at least with my mind, there's, if a motion were made to move forward, that would include the parking commitments planned. Commissioner Brown has agreed to kind of do. And then, as we get closer to the event, there's also a commitment from you that the community outreach, that they're going to make sure that we get that information today, you said?
Yeah, we can, yes, we can get it to you today.
And then you're going to continue to work with the folks that were on this list, as well as others, and then there's an expectation that your RP's are almost done, so the local labor force will be notified sooner rather than later?
Correct.
Because our most important, we got to make sure, one, we get the stadium open, so as we're pulling people from different directions, we got to make sure we have enough labor force locally. Okay, I think that that is all of my questions. Commissioner Brown?
John, what about volunteers? That was discussed briefly a couple months ago. Do you anticipate, is there a program in place that we can assist getting the volunteers that will be needed?
We do. We do, and I'll hand to Steve as well, but the NFL uses volunteers across all of our events. It's a great way for the community to participate and be a part of the event. We will use approximately, at Super Bowl this year, we're using 10,000 volunteers for that event. We have a staff in-house that works the volunteer program, and we will work directly with the LVCBA on that program as well.
And we are, Commissioner Brown, in the process of working with the NFL on a volunteer program for the draft.
So if we get contacted, they can go to a website or fill out a form and?
Yeah, they can go to our website and find that information.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and then, so let me just understand, just to overall, because, you know, I'm all about the communication, how is that going to get out there? Who's going to do it? And who can I, who can I call on Sunday morning at 6:00 AM if I have a question? Who is that person in this room?
I think it probably depends what the question is, but we'll make sure that you have contact information for the NFL leadership, make sure that you have contact information for the production leadership as well, but yeah.
And Madam Chair, I've been on the other end of that phone a few times, so you know how to get hold of me.
And late at night. So, and then I just want to make sure that we're constantly communicating with everybody so that everybody feels part of the conversation and that they can start planning. So in any organization, just because you talk to one person doesn't mean that it trickles down or up, so we want to make sure that enough people know, now that it's somewhat public, that there's no excuse to not know what's going on, right? Ken?
Madam Chair, we understand that. We'd also encourage folks who have questions to reach out to the LVCBA, and we'll make sure they get connected to the right people for answers.
Okay, Commissioner Weekly.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate that. I appreciate you asking about that phone number, because that is going to be vitally important as we communicate that out there. I see my friend Lee Haney, who's in the audience, and I was asking the Chair about Lee. Lee is one, I know I called her a gazillion times about that marathon race, and she worked a lot with that traffic plan. So that'd be somebody, Mr. Hill, if I can direct her or ask her if she can communicate with you, get involved in that, because I know that there is a plan out there already, and I don't know if, Ben, we have to spend a whole lot of time reinventing the will, if you will, but just some type of solid communications, I think, is just really going to be key. That's going to be the main thing that's going to really make this experience, John, a major success. And we want to be able to, when the smoke clears and everyone goes home and we go back to our normal lives, to not only say we exceeded what they did over in Nashville, but everybody had a good, safe experience and a fun time while they were here in Las Vegas.
Exactly, and we have the same goals, Commissioner.
And the last thing I want to see, John, is when I go on YouTube, I want to see some of those calls where the prospects get the calls from the coaches, like, you know, Mr. Bedain, you guys called the guy up on the phone and say, hi, may I speak to, may I speak to Justin Jones, please? And he says, this is he, Justin, this is the Las Vegas Raiders. And then Justin starts crying on the phone, and the family starts screaming, you know, that type of excitement. I'm looking forward to those type of videos.
I will leave that to you and Mark to discuss Friday.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, any other questions? So I would entertain a motion that includes all of those things, such as a parking update requirement, such as getting all that information to us, so that we know how to outreach to folks, and regular communications. I just think that this is a weekly kind of conversation, because we want to do it well, so that the next big one that you do, you know, this is nothing, right? In the grand scheme of things, so. Commissioner, who wants to make the motion? Somebody?
I would move to approve the lane closure plan as presented, encourage continued outreach to the list and others, and also provide our office with an update, so we can provide it to the County Commission Board on a two-week basis.
Okay, any other discussion? So we're clear where we're at, because I will hold you to those expectations. What time today, shall we be able to tell the community about some of that?
I think as soon as we walk out these doors, there's a plan.
Also, Commissioner Jones, so we can get the NFL green, because that's pretty intriguing to me, too, so.
Absolutely.
All right, you've heard the motion on the floor. Any other discussion? See and nun, please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.